It's a separate system.
It seems to be staying on.
No, it's always been crazy. He has other friends getting married on October 21st. That's probably how it has always been.
All right, seeing as how it's 6:30, we'll get the meeting started. I'd like to start with a roll call. Candy, can you help us out, please?
Bano?
Here.
Glish?
Here.
Mar?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Molsan?
Here.
Seibertson?
Here.
Smithback?
Here.
And Schnelly is absent.
Thank you. We have a quorum, so we'll move forward. First item on the agenda is the approval of the September 9th Plan Commission minutes.
John, I'll move approval.
We have a motion by Randy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark?
With mask top.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Agenda item four is community input for first item. And this is an opportunity for anybody that's in the audience to come and speak. We try to ask, we ask you to keep your comments if you have any to about three minutes. You can talk about anything that is on the agenda or not on the agenda. However, please note that during this time, we will not take action on your comments. The most that we would do is be able to refer it or talk about some procedural aspect of it. So with that being said, if anybody has any comments on something that's on the agenda or not on the agenda, now is the time. Okay, seeing none, we'll keep going. 4B, public hearing to discuss and consider approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor and outdoor commercial entertainment and in-vehicle sales and service in the planned business zoning district at 784 and 786 North Main Street. The applicant is the Thiel Properties. And I would like to open the public hearing. And we'll start off with public, or staff report, please. Elise, can you give us some background on this?
Sure. Thanks, John. So we have the Thieves here tonight, of course, to present about their project. This is the building at 784, 786 North Main Street. So currently used as Cost Cutters on the left side and was formerly the Postal Connections building on the right side. It's currently empty. That Cost Cutters lease, I think, comes up the end of this month. So the Thieves are looking to renovate the whole building, both inside and out, improve some of the exterior stucco and give it kind of a fresh look, provide a patio space and have this be a cafe, coffee shop type use with the drive-through window. At this point, they haven't identified an operator for the space that I'm aware of. They may have more information on that tonight. But looking to kind of spur some revitalization on the side of North Main Street, which is great, definitely something that we like to see. And I'll let them share a little bit more about their plans for the property. But again, just with these restaurant-type uses, inside and outside, and then that drive-through use, the in-vehicle sales and service that does require this conditional use permit in the planned business zoning district.
Okay. Thank you. Would you like to give us your name and address and tell us a little bit about your project, please?
Sure. Bonnie Thiel, Blue Heron Way in Oregon.
I'm Erin Thiel. I'm on Center Road in Stoughton.
Okay.
Yeah, so she, Elise gave a very good description of what your, what the plan is. And I guess the only information I have is that, yes, we do not have an operator identified. We're working with several parties on that. So Erin did a revision of what we had brought in last month. And maybe he can outline the changes that he made to it.
We do have several changes we made. There's some more measurements on here. From what, we were told we need a minimum of 10 spaces, 10 parking spaces for this establishment, based on capacity and the use. With our revision, we have 14. We did eliminate one in the northwest corner. And then we did eliminate a row on the east side of the property. We also have the dumpsters indicated on this drawing as well in the southwest, southeast, excuse me, southeast corner. And then some more measurements regarding lane spacing for the drive-through lane near the menu board and the rear of the building on the east side.
All right. So next item would be the public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this project other than the petitioners? Seeing none, we'll move on to Plan Commission comments. Anybody have any questions for the petitioner? Patrick?
I have one question. In the written area, it says there will be several entrances into this building on the plan. I'm noticing a door on the north facade. That makes me quite nervous, adjacent to the pickup area. Safety hazard there. Is that door planned or is that?
That's an existing door right now. It's currently drywalled off by Cost Cutters. And that was also a concern that we had as well, having vehicles moving through there and people exiting. So we would definitely have that as an emergency exit-only type situation. But yes, we did identify that concern as well.
Okay.
So I guess having an emergency exit only was kind of our solution to that.
Anything else?
So this is not related to the approval, but are you guys thinking breakfast, lunch, and dinner? I'm just, just curious, or don't know yet, or?
It's still not decided. As Elise said, we still have a couple operators we're talking to and they're still kind of working on their ideas.
Okay.
But that was kind of the gist of it, the breakfast, you know, drive-through coffee sandwiches.
Sure.
Bakery items. Have sandwich soup lunch and then possibly be open for dinner. If not, all we part of it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? I'd just like to say thank you for updating the site plan. I think that this is much more cohesive and is something that we could understand and be comfortable moving forward with. It's nice to see that you took the time to take the measurements because I think that this gives a site plan that works. So with that being said, we'll close the public hearing. And we will open it up for discussion with the Plan Commission. Anybody want to have any more comments, feedback? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for recommendation to Village Board.
John, I'll move approval.
We have a motion by Randy for approval, for approval to the Village Board. Anybody have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Larry. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to discuss and consider approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor and outdoor commercial entertainment and in-vehicle sales and service in the planned business zoning district at 1053 and 1075 Park Street. Affirmative is Craig Culver. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Elise, would you like to give us a report on the project, please?
Yes, and just to let the public know, I'll pull these up shortly here on the screen. But we do have an updated site plan and landscaping plan. We just weren't able to make it in time to get into the packet last week. So you have those printed out in front of you and I'll pull that up here shortly. So Culvers is looking to, as we've heard in the paper and mentioned in previous meetings, have a corporately-owned store, maybe sort of their next-generation prototype. And I'm sure the Culvers team will tell us a little bit more about, again, what that means and what their plans are for this store. But the big things are includes a double drive-through. Efficiencies inside the restaurant for the kitchen staff. Just improving technology so that it's a better customer and team member experience in moving people through the site efficiently and safely. Couple things to point out here. Again, this is similar to the use we just saw, indoor/outdoor dining, as well as the drive-through use. Those three items do require CUP. And this is in that same planned business zoning district, just on the other side of town, on the old Waterfall Motel site on Park Street. The main access to the site is off of Park Street now and not off Janesville Street. The original concept you all saw, I think, at the beginning of June, showed access off Janesville Street, so now that's sort of pivoted here. We'll go through a couple, you know, comments and suggestions that we have after Culvers' presentation. But one thing I did want to point out, this is mentioned on the staff report, something that's very critical to the operation of this store with the double drive-through is having two, what are called, drive-through signs, the menu board sign. Those are shown here. Currently, our sign code that was adopted in 2017 only allows one drive-through sign per use or per, you know, lot, yeah, per business. So had, we caught that a little bit earlier, that there were going to be those two signs needed. And part of that was just me being out of, over the summer and kind of missing that in the earlier conversations with Culvers. I do want to make sure that, you know, if you all are comfortable, we move them through. I know the closing on the property is scheduled to happen later this month. But would be planning on bringing back to you a zoning text amendment to make a change to our sign ordinance that says two drive-through signs would be allowed in the planned business zoning district with a conditional use permit. And I think I would just add to the staff conditions of approval for both the conditional use permit and then the site plan that you're going to be voting on next, that those, the site plan and the CUP are approved, you know, contingent on that zoning text amendment change to the sign code being adopted. And we'd probably bring that to either the November or December meeting pretty shortly here. So they would, you know, just be moving forward, understanding that that change still needs to be made. Hopefully, that's something you all support for some reason. That two sign allowance doesn't happen, then they'd have to come back and amend the site plan. But I don't foresee that being too much of an issue just because, you know, we do have other communities in Dane County that have these double drive-throughs, but it's a big, takes up a lot of real estate on a site. And we don't have a lot of properties that are in this planned business zoning district, but it is this kind of the wave of the future with COVID and people grabbing stuff in their cars. We might see that these double drive-throughs actually serve a good purpose in keeping folks from backing up off into the street. And it helps them move through the site a little bit more efficiently. So just wanted to give you a heads up and, John, when we get to the vote, if we can add that condition of approval, that these are approved contingent on that sign code text changing within, you know, we could put a time limit on it or before building permits are issued. But I think we should be able to get that wrapped up pretty quickly. So I think that's all I wanted to point out. And I'll turn it over to the Culvers team to talk a little bit about their plan and they can toggle back and forth between some stuff that was submitted previously and then the new sheet that you shared with us today.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you, Elise, for pulling this together for us. My name's Todd Reimer. I'm with Culvers, the corporate office. So Perry Dusak, here representing Craig Culver. We also have two other Culvers members in the audience tonight. One is Steve Datka, who handles all things architecture. We have Jake Delone, who handles all things site planning. We also have our engineer, Joe Meyer, who is sitting next to me. And Joe's been involved with this project from the start. And in fact, his company, Kimley Horn, is a preferred contractor, preferred supplier, if you will, for Culvers. So it's very appropriate that we are in this together. So a little bit about the project. We identified this particular site a while ago. I've been working on it since February. The plan here is that this will be the very first of a new prototype for Culvers. The workings of that are going on behind the scenes right now. All of the things that make a Culvers a Culvers today will be a part of this moving forward. It's not going to be changed dramatically, but there are technology upgrades, building upgrades that will be incorporated into this as we move forward. Color schemes are still going to be the same. What makes this kind of unique, not kind of unique, very unique, is we have about 820 Culvers locations today. A handful of those, five, are corporately-owned. And this one is going to be owned by Craig Culver himself. So in the office, this is a big deal. We're very proud of this. Craig can't wait for this to get built. So he's got both hands on our back pushing us to get this done. So the only issue is that we don't know exactly what this building's going to look like today. But it's going to be roughly the same size as we move forward with the site plan. It's going to be in the same location. It's going to be a drive-through concept with indoor seating, patio outside, and all of the smiles and pleases and thank yous hopefully that you come to expect from Culvers.
Yeah. Thank you, Todd. As I mentioned, I'm with Kimley Horn, Joe Meyer with Kimley Horn. We helped prepare the application documents. And I want to say thank you to staff for working with us, with, especially with the late inclusion of our site and landscape plan that really, I guess, portrays our comment response letter. So we responded to staff's comments. And for the most part, I think we've picked them up with the latest site plan that is in front of you. And Elise, if, or whoever is driving, if maybe we start with the site plan, I can walk through some, some high-level concepts. So yes, seeking two access points on Park Street. And in general, the circulation is there's, there's the dedicated lanes for the dual drive-through, which stack on the east side of the property, then merge for the drive-through window before, if you're all familiar with Culvers, the order waiting concept. So there's really this integrated movement that's going to keep the drive-through stack from impacting Park Street or even the parking lot. So that was our goal with this plan, especially as, you know, the drive-through sales continue to grow, to making sure that this latest site plan can accommodate that. And then, in similar fashion, I think it's seen on a lot of Culvers, accommodating both normal, you know, car parking, as well as some allowance for truck and trailer or boat and trailer parking. We, we've tried, you know, with, with staff to improve the pedestrian connectivity. So there's, there's two pedestrian connections currently to the site. The first is from the mid-block ramp on Park Street, which cuts through the middle of the site to the front door. And then there's a second connection to Janesville Street, to the bike path. And with that, one of the new additions is adding some bike parking up there at the right-of-way. And still working out the details, but potentially some type of amenity, whether it's benches or a bike repair station, trying to encourage bike traffic to the property. And, and throughout the parking lot, trying to complement with, with parking islands, landscaping, and, and meeting the ordinance for stormwater management. So we believe we met kind of the intent of the staff's comments. And like Todd said, I think the site plan is, the intent of the site plan is going to remain, even with some minor changes to the, to the prototype. I think what you have in front of us, in front of you is what we're looking to pursue. So be happy to answer any questions on the site plan. And if we don't mind going to the landscape plan quickly, I think we can see a couple of the changes we've made. The site plan is conceptual in nature, that there's certainly the intent to provide canopy trees throughout the parking lot to reduce the heat island effect. And also providing screening on Park Street and Janesville, as well as on the east property line against the storage property. The, as typical, there'd be some more screening around the trash enclosure, which will be a masonry trash enclosure, as well as foundation, foundation plantings and around the patio. It is our goal to, you know, make this a pleasing site from a, you know, visual perspective and open to feedback on landscaping. But with that said, I think I've covered some of the site and landscape context. Todd, is there anything you wanted to cover on the building right at this moment?
Unless there's some questions.
Okay. Thank you. We'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the project? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is Plan Commission comments. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the petitioner? Yes, Patrick?
Couple of comments and maybe one or two questions. First of all, thank you for the revised site plan. I was particularly concerned about pedestrian access coming from the hotel. And you resolved that fairly nicely. I say fairly because I'm a little concerned about the island in the parking lot where the sidewalk is adjacent to parking. And my question with respect to that is, is there any way that that island could shift or the, the walkway could shift so it's centered on the island? Because if somebody's opening a door and somebody's walking right next to a car, I see a little concern there.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem. We can shift the island to have green space on both sides of it.
I would, I'd like you to consider that and possibly even some shrubbery or something like that. Second comment with respect to shrubbery is the, on the eastern half of the property, separating the drive-through lanes from the parking lot. It's labeled as turf, I believe. Why not any bushes or landscape barrier there from the cars that are waiting in line?
Yeah, I think there's always a balance between wanting to have some sightlines to your project, as well as also some screening. I think we're, we're open to adding more landscaping and, and, you know, especially in that area. Are you specifically referring to in between the parking field and the drive-through or the drive?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's something that we can add to the plan to clean up that area.
I think more screening would be preferable, certainly on my part. Your graphic, I certainly, no disrespect intended, but I hope you don't have that many cars lined up. I'm sure you want that many, but I just see all those cars idling and not, not very pretty. But yeah, so I would be in favor of a little bit more landscaping in that large green zone. My last comment with respect to bikes, I appreciate the effort to have kind of a bike station slash parking adjacent to Janesville. As someone who bikes a lot, I prefer to have my bike as close to the property so I can keep an eye on it. my bike as close to the property so I can keep an eye on it. So if possible, incorporating some type of parking, which would be on your west little court area to the west of the building, would be preferable.
Yeah, and that's not an issue. I think where we have it shown now, could more just be benching or, you know, we could move that further into the site. Understand the security or safety and security of where you're parking your bike and not have it out in the street. And we can look at other locations for that.
I don't see any exterior seating. Is it the goal not to have any? Or is it just not shown at this time?
We're not showing patio furniture at this time, but the, sorry, the intent is to have patio furniture. It's just not shown on the site.
Okay. One of the nice caveats, I think, of your operation is that exterior seating. So I would encourage that.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments, questions?
I had one question that maybe there's nothing. We have authority over here, but I was just interested in what kind of energy conservation techniques that you're putting into your new building sites.
Well, I'll try to handle that one. We also have a few others that might have heard more than I. I don't know specifically the answer to that question, other than behind the scenes, we talk about things like, you know, electric vehicles and how to handle those. Because this is our prototype of the future, as much of that stuff as we can incorporate right now, we will. As far as a plan to have this be green, I'm not sure.
I could just think of recharge stations for electric cars and those sort of things. Be nice to plan those in.
That's what I was referring to. Yeah, we have had those discussions.
Good.
You know, the part of the beauty of this site is it's large enough. It's larger than a usual Culver site. We have those flexibilities. So when we had a list of comments from staff, we're able to incorporate those. Where in a one-acre site, we wouldn't be able to.
Okay. Anybody else?
I really like the way you directed a lot of drive-through traffic around the site and it doesn't conflict with any of the entrances to the building. It's really rare to see that. Normally, doors are coming out into drive aisles and things like that. So you've prepared to stack a lot of cars in there. And I don't know if anybody has noticed, the Culvers in Stoughton, the last year and a half with COVID, there's literally cars backed up out on Highway 51 in the evening. And a site plan like this would avoid those kind of problems and allow people to get through drive-throughs, which have become more important than ever the last year and a half. So I was really impressed with the way this achieves that.
Well, Mr. Meyer, I think that, you know, I've been in the QSR industry a long time. I've never seen one that stacks any nicer than this. And I think that what usually happens is you try to put a square building or a rectangular building on a square-ish sort of site. And when we got working on this triangular one, this wasn't our first effort. And we had the building further west and 90 degrees different. And it came, it became very apparent very quickly that when we did this, a lot of problems went away. And that's why that other entrance point went away as well, because it would have come right into stacking.
Anybody else?
I'll just say with respect to the double menu board, yes, that's something that needs to be updated. Everywhere you go, that's common. So I support that.
Okay, great.
I was going to ask about the access off of Janesville Street, and you answered that already, so I appreciate that. And Patrick asked the question already too about the bike rack. I agree. I think that it would be important to have it closer to the entry to the building. And it's not that difficult and you know the nu-ru. I saw that the monument sign that you're proposing is 20 feet tall. Is that the case?
Yeah. I think the foundation, yeah, right, with the base being probably the first 10. And, or sorry, yeah, nine, eight. But that is the intent for some visibility from the highway and from Janesville.
Okay. I would, I'd like to see if that doesn't, I don't think that we allow monument signs that high, do we?
Yeah, we're double checking. The sign approval itself, though, still requires that sign permit. So it'd still go through that check of the sign code and everything. And that would probably all be submitted with one package, I imagine, once we get the main award and stuff. But also really make sure it's within that height limitation and hopefully if it does need to be a little bit shorter, it can be scaled down.
I think it's 10 feet.
It is 10 feet.
Yeah.
Okay. And what type of, speaking of the menu boards, what type of speaker do you use on there? Are they digital or are they analog?
I'm going to turn around for that one.
Okay. I'd like you to possibly explore using a digital because the sound doesn't carry as long or as far and it's not as sharp. You know, they call them squawk boxes, not because of its popularity, but because of the analog nature sometimes. So if you could explore the digital nature, I'd appreciate that. I noticed that you have an escape lane that goes around the majority of the drive-through. And we've commented about how well this project stacks. And I completely understand, having done several of these myself, about the escape lane requirements and fire department and emergency access and stuff. Have you explored? It seems wide. First of all, it seems wide. And secondly, have you explored options as to maybe an alternative? I'm not talking about a permeable paver because they're terrible in our environment, but possibly something like a drivable grass surface.
I think I'll start with the width. Our intent is to meet the fire code for the fire access. And originally, what we had shown was a 12-foot wide bypass lane or escape lane. We expanded that working with the fire department. And maybe it was a misinterpretation of the comment, but what we show right now at times is 19 feet, trying to maintain like 26 feet of clear width. But that can be brought down and we're working with staff to minimize that. We don't want it to be wider than it needs to be. As far as the, like, alternative pavements, I may defer to Todd. There certainly is a couple of things we could look at. Permeable pavers is a common one, but to your point, there are downsides of that from a maintenance perspective. And you want to address?
Yeah, well, and again, as Joe mentioned, we widened it based on early comments. And so absolutely can take that back down. And I don't know enough about the options to really talk intelligently about. Happy to work with you, though.
Yeah.
Happy to work with you.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see it go down. There's no reason for a 26-foot clearance because you don't have a hydrant located anywhere. So I believe that you go down to a 12-foot width at a minimum. I do know that there are products out there that are allowed to have the compression of fire trucks and emergency vehicles that are drivable. It's basically like a plastic mat that you put sand and then grass over the top. It's a nice alternative that even if you could work it out, obviously, you're going to have to have some discussions with the fire department on the thing. Find out what their appetite might be for something like that. But at a minimum, I'd like to see that reduced to 12 feet. Even if you could make the outside a mountable curb so that you can get an additional 12 inches out of the thing. I know it doesn't sound like much, but it plays into it.
Yeah.
And as far as my perspective, if there's an emergency, you can drive on the grass. You know, it's okay.
Yeah, I think the mountable curb's a great idea and we can bring it down to the standard 12. And we have, when I say we, Kimley Horn have installed the reinforced turf. I would say my only comment is it can be done for the fire access, but when it's being used often for regular customers and thinking about the maintenance of it, also, you know, snow plowing.
Agreed. It's a balance that you're going to have to play.
Right. But I do think there's things we can do to reduce the size of it. And I think we're on the same page. We would like it to be at 12 feet.
Okay.
Yeah. John, I can just clarify too. I think I tried to understand, they're kind of getting two different comments from the fire department about access and what that lane, what they'd like to see. It sounds like for fire trucks, there's plenty of easy access to the store from the parking lot. But obviously, if there was somebody in the drive-through lane that had a medical emergency and folks aren't getting out of the way because they don't want to lose their spot in line or there's nowhere to go, they want to be able to get to them. I think they discussed, you know, they're going to do what they need to do if it's an ambulance or whatever to get back to somebody. So if it means that some sprinkler heads or azaleas or whatever gets driven over, obviously, got to get to that person. But I also understand that sometimes just operationally, there's a need that somebody changes their mind, something comes up, that they need to leave that drive-through lane. Maybe it's taking a little bit of time. So I think, yeah, if we can kind of come to that compromise, get it down a little bit just to reduce the pavement. And, you know, maybe there's some other surface types that work. If not, I think just overall reducing that pavement when possible, that hopefully that emergency access lane never has to be used for that purpose. But at least there will be something and then something for your customers to use as well.
Two more things. A question first for Elise and Ben. We've got a 43, let's call it 4,400 square foot building, and they're basing their parking ratios off of 1 to 300. Is this type of use not based off of occupancy low?
So this one, yeah, the restaurant use is based off of seating. So it's one space for every three seats, assuming that kind of the average group size that comes in, one car together is about three people. So I still think you're probably going to be well over the maximum. And actually, for the Fields Cafe that I mentioned before, we, they don't have their, you know, furniture plan laid out yet, but just based on the square footage, we talked to the fire department and we're able to estimate, based on the square footage, it's probably going to have this kind of occupancy. So happy to do the same thing, just to confirm that you have that parking number out there. But I think, given what's provided here, you're probably going to be fine. But yeah, that is actually not one of the categories that's going to be, that's proposed to be changed in the parking text amendment coming up later in the agenda. So that's going to remain constant, that one space, one space for every three seats at your maximum occupancy.
That's fine.
I guess to that point then brings me to my comments on the site itself. You know, you've got enough parking here for about 180 people. And obviously, that's high. But I would ask you, knowing that there's turnover in your, you know, quick service approach, and I would like to have you make the 10 stalls that are furthest away from the Culvers in that, what am I going to, what's the southwest corner? No, southeast corner, sorry. Leave them on your plan, but dash them as future because nobody's going to use those. And same thing with those four stalls that are out on that, that drive-through lane parallel to Park Street. Those will be the absolute last 14 stalls that anybody ever uses. I would even go so far as to suggest that the three oversized boat-trailer parking stalls that you've got are awesome, because there's going to be people that use those a lot. I would say get rid of those four parking stalls. And it's unreasonable to have those long parking stalls at a 90-degree angle to a drive aisle. They don't turn on a dime. So I would angle them by removing those four stalls and angling those three parking, those long parking stalls between the drive aisles, so that you can access them off of both sides and people can get out off of both sides then.
So what kind of orientation would the trailer spaces have?
They'd be at an angle.
So kind of a south-west to northeast?
So, yeah, they'd be angled.
We can, sorry, we can provide some turning movements. I think that it's tough to visualize because the two drive aisles are at an angle, but I think we can further angle them counterclockwise an extra like 30 degrees so that, and we can show a turning movement that they can get in and out.
Thank you for putting that into-
Yeah. We did widen them to 12 feet also. They're originally nine, understanding that we don't want boats clipping cars.
It's usually a bad deal.
Right. So I think we can accommodate the change.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, Todd, want to touch on the loss of 14 spaces though, or do you have an opinion on it?
Well, I was just wondering as you were talking, we certainly, given the time of year, given how the lot is used, COVID had a lot to do with what percent's going through the drive-through. There might be some instances where we could designate those as employee and they would be used.
If, that's something that I would be able, I would entertain. I just think that those 10 stalls at the end would not be used. And I'm not asking you to not put them in. I'm asking you to leave them in there.
Okay.
So that, but just show them as dashed and don't put them in at this time. So that if you ever found out that during your operation, you needed those 10 stalls, it's an easy site plan approval with staff to get them back in, correct?
Yeah, there'd just be a site plan revision. And if that is shown as a dashed future area, that's something we probably wouldn't need to be coming back to Planning Commission for. So you've already seen on the plans.
Correct. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand where you're heading with it. And I guess as long as we meet the parking requirement.
Yep, above and beyond, yeah.
And then the last thing, I know that it's really not part of the submittal, but I'm going to ask you on your, you spoke very eloquently about how this is a prototype and the first of its kind, that, and that you don't have all of the architectural things resolved yet. But I know that Culvers does an outstanding job of maintaining their properties and keeping them up. And I have no fear in that. But I would like to see that the building architecture itself responds to the joy that you have sort of presented with this cutting-edge new prototype. And that it doesn't look just like one that you put in, you know, City X.
Right. Well, that's all we had to show you, unfortunately. So I think we did that because we do have a corporate color scheme, right? And it wouldn't make any sense at all to have the newest prototype be so dramatically different that you don't recognize this as a Culver. So-
Completely understand.
I don't think I'm out of school here saying that it will be within that Culvers box.
Yep. Yep. And I get it. I think that corporate is a thing that, you know, makes us relate to it. But I think that maybe some increased wood, you know, behind your signage so that it kind of ties together some of the wood that you've got in the building, but it makes your sign pop off. Something like that, so that you can do things that make the prototype something special, because it is something special.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And we'll have a discussion amongst ourselves here for possible recommendation with the Village Board regarding the approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor and outdoor commercial entertainment and in-vehicle sales and service at 1053 and 1075 Park Street. Anybody have any comments, questions, or entertain the motion? And I would ask that that motion also include the recommendations and conditions of approval from staff, as well as a contingent on the site, that the approval be contingent on the sign code text. And the change must be completed by the time of the building permit application.
Yeah, I think that gives us plenty of time.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Patrick, seconded by Randy. All those, and everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item, since your seats are warmed up, the site plan review and possible approval for Culvers restaurants at 1053 and 1075 Park Street. I think we've kind of talked this through. And I think, do you have anything to add, Elise?
No, I know there's always a lot of overlap when we see new construction and we've got the uses kind of as one approval with the CUP and then the site plan. So I think I've captured all of the comments and suggestions and changes. So if you all are comfortable, I'll work with Culvers team and Joe to have those changes made, updated to the site plan. And I'll just keep that in the files, make sure that all of those comments are addressed. And then, you know, when the time comes, the building permit will make sure that the construction plans are consistent with the site plan. So there wouldn't be any need to come back to the Planning Commission, as long as those suggestions are incorporated or adjusted in some way. So there wouldn't be any need to come back to the planning commission, as long as those suggestions are incorporated or addressed in some way.
Fair enough, okay.
John, I'll move approval.
Okay, motion by Randy, seconded by.
Seconded.
Seconded by Larry. Anybody have any discussions, questions? Patrick?
I, I'm a little concerned. I don't want to slow your progress down, but, I mean, we made a bunch of suggestions. I don't have a finished site plan. To me, it seems like they should come back with a finished site plan for approval. That's my personal feeling.
So Ben, procedurally, with the conditional use permit, if the site plan isn't approved, is the conditional use permit sort of sitting?
He just approved the conditional use permit?
Yeah, so.
So the conditional use permit is approved?
Is active, but there's no.
Which I believe is what you need for the closing, is that correct?
Yeah, we're basically from Culvers seats, we're trying to figure out how many boxes we can check moving forward, because we do have a closing that is dictated by a purchase and sale agreement. And so we're, we're just trying to figure out comfort levels as we move forward.
So I guess we could do a couple of things. You could approve the site plan tonight, and then we could bring back that revised site plan to you at the November meeting and make sure that, comfortable with those changes. I don't think they're going anywhere, that they're not going to submit those. But if you'd rather wait and hold the site plan approval till the next meeting, I think the conditional use permit is still active. It would just, you know, be final, CUP is contingent on an approved site plan, so.
So we would want to not approve this site plan and just table it? Or would we want to make this an initial approval? Or have this approved contingent upon final approval happening at a later planning commission meeting? Does that make any sense?
You could approve it with the conditions as you guys have outlined, and then they would be required to meet that in their next evolution of a site plan. And it wouldn't necessarily have to come back to you, because they would have incorporated your comments that way.
But if that's something you want to see at a planning commission meeting, we could even share it without vote at the planning commission meeting, as long as, you know, I can do the check that all those things are incorporated. But if you'd rather see that before you do any kind of approval, we can, I guess, table it tonight and give that to the November fourth meeting would be our next meeting.
And so what's the appetite for the, we have a, we have a motion in a second, but we can withdraw that. But what's the appetite with the planning commission on this?
I'll tell you, my preference again is that they should come back and we should look at a plan with the changes that we've made suggestions, so that we can confirm that we agree with it, rather than putting this off to staff and then hoping that everything gets done.
Okay.
Candy, were you going to say something?
I was just going to say there is a motion on the floor, so.
Yep, so we'd have to withdraw it if this doesn't.
Or you could vote it down.
We could vote it down. Good point, thank you.
So, so John, just one comment. So this does not hold anything up for these guys? I mean, for the sale and all that, does it?
Well, again, from my chair, I have to go back and describe how, how things went. We do have the meeting on the eighteenth, if, if we can move forward with this. Ultimately, it's, it's a measure of risk, whether you write the big check and close on it. Because this is a box that won't be checked as of tonight, and we'll have to make a decision.
I just would like to echo something that Todd said earlier, that this site has a lot of room, and we have every intention to resolve all of the comments. There's a lot of flexibility with the site. I haven't heard anything tonight that we can't address. I realize there's probably a confidence level of having a plan in front of you versus my words, but I think it's something we can address in the next week before the village board.
Yeah, and I do think, well, regardless of the site plan decision tonight, we can still move the conditional use permit forward to the village board meeting on the eighteenth.
We've done this before with a list of conditions to be verified by staff, and I guess maybe amending the motion to include those conditions.
Right.
For me, will be enough, but.
Okay.
We're talking about narrowing an escape lane and possibly angling a couple of outer parking stalls. I'm not too nervous about, about that happening and being reviewed by staff.
I will say they did a great job in terms of responding to comments from Ben and myself and our engineer. While we didn't get that revised site plan and landscaping plan until this morning, that comment letter was sent, you know, before the packet went out. So they've, they've been really great in terms of accommodating the comments that we have. I guess, I don't know if this is another option, that we, you all could approve the site plan tonight with the condition that a revised site plan come back at the November meeting showing the comments that are requested. So that way, you're, you're getting to see it, but they have something.
That's a little more valid for the meeting.
Okay.
So then let's do this, we have a motion in a second on the table, let's vote it down, and then let's restart again with a new motion. Does that sound reasonable?
Or withdraw.
Or petition.
I'll withdraw. I was fir, was I first?
You had the motion.
Yeah.
And.
Larry, Larry seconded that.
You withdraw your motion, Larry, you withdraw your second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have no motion on the table. So I will entertain a new motion. Would somebody like to put something forward?
Patrick?
You did such a good job.
Do you want me to say what I said again?
That would be correct.
Okay, so the motion would be to approve the site plan as is tonight with the motion about the, or the condition about the sign code changing, you know, before the building permit. And then also, a revised site plan would need to return at the November fourth, twenty twenty-one planning commission meeting to confirm that the, the changes requested have been incorporated.
Disgusting.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Everybody understand the motion?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries, and you have some comfort level then to move forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, next item on the agenda, four E. Public hearing to discuss and consider approval of a replat of the Autumn Woods Greens condominium plat. The applicant is Jerome Klein, and I will open the public hearing. And I will leave it to Elise to give us a little bit of background. We've all seen this before, but Elise.
All right, let me toggle over to this. So again, you did see this conceptually at the last meeting, but this is across from the middle school over off Pleasant Ave, Heidi Way, and Charles Court. This is all in one plat as a condo plat, but there are two units, unit eight, where Jerome lives, and unit six, where his neighbors, the Blocks, live. They would like to do, I'll kind of zoom in over here. So unit eight is proposing a sunroom, unit six is proposing a, of a stone paver patio. Because it's on all one parcel, and this is how, you know, condos work. Each unit's footprint is supposed to be, you know, that's what is owned. Everything that's outside, the common green space, any common amenities, roads, things like that, are all part of the common area. So anytime there's a proposal to build something that's permanent and encroach into that common space, there's procedure to be followed, including a replat of the condo plat. But also, each condo association has different bylaws in terms of how these changes are made. In this particular association, there's a requirement that two-thirds of the owners agree that they are comfortable with the changes, because again, it's that common space that's shared and owned by everybody that would be, you know, reduced slightly by these sunroom and patio proposed uses. There are a couple of letters here from neighbors. I think they're mostly regarding kind of the proceedings of April twenty twenty-one condo association meeting, and if Robert's rules were followed, and obviously, that's not a meeting that staff attended. We leave it up to the condo association to, you know, privately handle their own matters. And then, you know, applications submitted on good faith, and the applicant signs that all the information is true to the best of their understanding. I did run this by our village attorney just to make sure he didn't have any concerns with us moving forward, just since there are some questions about, that a couple of the neighbors have raised about making sure that all of the votes were counted. I think the, the core of the issue is that there were a couple of people absent from that meeting. And I believe that kind of regardless of those people not being there, one or both of these changes, everybody was, enough people were okay with. But Jerome can probably speak a little bit more to that. We've got some letters from neighbors that were actually there at that meeting, and I think they're comfortable, as well, as well as the condo board is comfortable that everything was, the procedure was followed properly. And again, sort of a private issue, I think from a village perspective, we've reviewed this from a zoning perspective. The village engineer has reviewed, didn't have any comments, so technically speaking, we don't have any concern. I know a lot of these, a couple of these setbacks, including here what the patio are really close to the property line. A lot of these units, especially unit five, is extremely close to the property line, and that's how it was laid out when this was approved back in the nineties, early two thousands. But there's nothing in the GDP when this condo was approved, nothing in the zoning text that says you can only be, you know, X feet away from the property line or anything like that. So just the plat would be what would need to be updated before these owners could proceed with the building project, other than a, a building permit, of course. So I'll let Jerome maybe add a little bit more background there, but I think that kind of covers my understanding of the events and everyone's comments, and appreciate adding some more perspectives too, just in terms of kind of how that, that meeting was handled.
Okay, I can, Jerome Klein was here last month, had a conceptual review of this. I am at six fifty Heidi Way in the Autumn Woods Greens Condominium Association. Also Bob Block, who's the other party that is proposing an addition, is here along with some other members of the condominium association. Our, we, we basically had two proposals that we wanted to add, which would move into the common area of the condominium association, as Elise explained, and our condo documents do allow for common area amendments. Basically, you have to get four level approval, and then you get two-thirds of the condominium owners to give consent. We had a meeting back in April, we had twenty-four unit, twenty-four of the twenty-seven unit members were represented at that meeting. Each project was presented and voted on individually. The block proposal, which is the concrete patio addition, which is about a two hundred square feet addition out the south end of their unit, was voted on, and that was, that passed eighteen to six. And then our proposal, which is a fourteen by sixteen sunroom, which is also out the south end of our unit, was discussed and voted on, and the vote was sixteen to eight, which was two-thirds. At that point, there was some discussion in the meeting, shouldn't, you know, there was three members that weren't represented. And we have a very open, obviously, a small condominium association. There was discussion, should we go back to those three owners who weren't there and give them a chance to weigh in on that, to see what their position would be on that? It could have been to our benefit, or it could have been to our detriment. And we, as a, as a condo association at that meeting, we decided that we would ask our association secretary to go back to those three members and just ask them for their input the following day. Of, of those three, one abstained, and the other two voted in favor of, of the proposal. So it went from sixteen to eight to eighteen to eight, and one abstention. Either case, whether it was at the meeting or the day after, the two-thirds requirement was met by the members who were at the meeting. So we feel, and the board feels very strongly that, you know, there were really no issues with the, with how the votes were taking, were taken. We then went ahead with the survey work and, and also did a condominium amendment, which has been then submitted to the village for review and approval. There were two opposing letters, as, as Elise alluded to, and then I, I wrote a response to those letters, which is included in the documents, as well as some of the other members of the association wrote responses. So again, I don't know how much detail you want me to go into. I would just say that, you know, thank you for, for the opportunity to present, give you a little bit of the background, and I just would, would hope that you would consider the merits of the zoning replat on its merits, and as Elise kind of mentioned, if we have some internal issues at the association, this is probably not the forum to deal with those. But that's obviously your, your call on how you want to deal with that, so. That's kind of what I wanted to say. I could certainly answer any questions if now's the time, or wait for other comments.
Thank you. At this time, what we'll do then is we'll open it up for anybody else in the audience that has public comment or questions on the project. Anybody? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to planning commission. Does anybody in the planning commission have any questions on this? We've seen it conceptual, and it hasn't conceptual, and it hasn't changed much since last month. Anybody have any questions or comments? It seemed to have crossed the T's and dotted their I's.
Just, just Elise, I think you said it, but just want to maybe say it again, that from a zoning perspective, there, there, we don't have any, there's no, nothing wrong with what they're trying to do.
No, no, this area does back up into the golf course, but again, this is within the property boundaries. There's nothing in terms of when this was originally laid out in the zoning language that limits, you know, how close any building or outside structure can, can be. So yeah, from a zoning perspective, we always have our engineers look at any replats, make sure that everything is notated properly. A lot, you know, make sure all the easements and paths, things like that are noted on here. So they've done that with their surveyor, and from a village perspective, you know, we're recommending approval of this replat.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions in the asking? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move into discussion of possible recommendation of the village board regarding the approval of a replat of the Autumn Woods Greens condominium plat. Is there anybody that would like to make that motion? I'll make it. Anybody have a second on that?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, and I guess I'd like to amend mine to include any comments from staff and, okay, so. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item, settle in, this one's going to take some while to read. Public hearing to discuss the zoning text amendment amending section seventeen dash one oh five, parent two, parent A, seventeen dash one oh five, parent two, parent B, seventeen dash one oh five, parent two, parent C, seventeen dash one oh five, parent two, parent D, seventeen dash one oh five, parent two, parent E, seventeen one oh five, parent two, parent F, seventeen one oh five, parent two, parent G, seventeen two oh six, parent one, parent A, seventeen two oh six, parent three, parent C, seventeen two oh six, parent three, parent E, seventeen two oh six, parent four, parent A, seventeen two oh six, parent four, parent B, seventeen two oh six, parent four, parent C, and seventeen two oh, dash two oh six, parent four, parent R, of the Village of Oregon Municipal Code relating to parking standards. With that, I will open the public hearing. Elise, can you give us an update as to where we are and where we've been and where we're going?
Sure, and as fun as that was to hear you read all of that, I think when you make the motion, you could just say, you know, as stated on the agenda. But you were on a roll, so.
I was hoping he could repeat it.
Yeah, I know, Candy didn't catch one of those. I think he said the wrong letter, so, okay. So I did bring this before your, your last planning commission meeting, just to kind of update you on the process. There was a request back in August from the village board to make further amendments to the parts of our zoning code that relate to parking standards in a couple of specific categories. Basically, the request was that in the categories that either there was not a change suggested or a change was suggested that didn't meet exactly what is the requirement in the Fort Atkinson code, which was, you know, one example we were using to compare to a similarly sized community with a more updated zoning code, what the requirements were for certain use categories. So this change would essentially bring all of our parking standards up to those Fort Atkinson requirements for various use categories. A lot of those were addressed in August. The ones that weren't addressed or weren't kind of fully brought to those standards again are what you'll see here. So I'll just kind of overview what's being proposed to be changed. But I did bring this draft zoning text amendment, although the computer's ruined, adding it there. Did bring this to the village board, I think, two meetings ago, just to make sure that this text amendment captured the changes they were looking to see. They said that it did, so. They said that it did, so we issued the public hearing notices, and here we are tonight. So we'll have a discussion, public hearing, regardless of, you know, planning commission recommendation for approval or denial. This will still go to the village board, the October eighteenth meeting for their vote as well. That's kind of the final step in the process, and then, you know, maybe we'll leave our parking standards alone for a little while. Remains to be seen. The changes that are essentially being made are largely to residential categories, essentially for all the single-family zoning districts. The requirement was that three spaces per lot. That includes spaces in people's driveways. If you have a two-car garage, you've got a driveway typically, you've got at least four parking spaces, if not six, depending on the length of your driveway. But again, these are minimums. Most people, most businesses are going above and beyond what are the minimums, and providing the parking they feel is needed. So all the single-family residential districts are touched here. For the duplex districts, that's also being brought down, I think, from a requirement of four, if I'm right then, to two for each unit. I think, maybe it's three to two.
I think it's three to two. It reflects the other change.
Yeah. The other major change is with multifamily housing, so the changes that you all had recommended and put forward to the board back in August had sort of a tiered approach. So there was a certain number of spaces for three bedrooms, a certain number for two ones and studios. The approach that Fort Atkinson takes, and we see some other communities take, is that just regardless of the size of the unit, you require 1.5 parking spaces per unit for multifamily. This allows a little flexibility, too, for developers, as they might be shifting around a layout of an apartment building. Maybe they decide, rather than do two one-bedroom units, they could actually fit a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom unit, and this way it doesn't really affect maybe the parking calculations quite as much. They just know we're going to get a, we're going to do a forty-five unit building, and regardless of the mix of bedroom sizes, the parking requirement's going to be X. So that is kind of the residential changes at a high level. Other changes, again, I'm not too concerned about this one. We're not building a lot of senior high schools these days, but there was a, the change that was put forward was once, in August, I'm sorry, was one space for every one teacher and staff member plus thirty percent of maximum student enrollment. So assuming every staff member and teacher drives, and approximately a third of students drive to school, this change, what Fort Atkinson has is one space for every two teachers and staff members, and then that same assumption about, about a third of students driving. So again, would be overall less spaces that would be required, could certainly be more. And then the other uses, we often see these office, indoor sales, personal, professional service, so, you know, your insurance offices, barber shops, small, you know, bookstores, things like that, kind of interchangeable uses, so they often have the same parking requirements, just in case there is a turnover in those uses. So believe the change that was put forward last time was at three fifty, one space for every three hundred and fifty square feet. This is bringing this up to one space every four hundred square feet. So overall, given size of the building, this would be less spaces that would be required. The other category is artisan studios, and that's, again, bringing that, that change up to, to match the requirement. So overall, this is, you know, a direct reflection of the request from the board coming forward with these changes. This is the last step before taking it to the board for their final vote.
Okay. Thank you. Next item would be petitioner's comments. Who would that be?
I guess the village board as a whole. I'm not sure if any board members want to speak on that.
Anybody? Want to come up and speak on this?
My name is Mike Wunsch. I live at 299 North Main Street, and I'm a village trustee. When this whole zoning text amendment on parking started and came before the planning commission, and we had our first public hearing, I didn't speak out or say anything about it, mainly because I was only paying attention to what was going on with library parking at the time, but also because, as a member of the village board, I felt that, you know, I had my own forum on the board, and I shouldn't be, like, stepping on toes and stepping before, speaking before you, before it got to the board. So it wasn't until the Friday before the board meeting, when I got my packet, that I started to really look at what was in the zoning text amendment and to realize that I had systemic concerns about the amount of parking that we were still requiring. So I brought him up at the village board, which is why we got this whole process going again for more alterations to the zoning text amendment and a new open hearing that we're having tonight. On reflection, I think I was wrong in how I approached that. I think I should have paid much more attention and gotten involved much sooner, and I want to apologize to the planning commission and to staff if you feel your time was wasted and that you're having to redo things, and if you feel your feathers were ruffled by this. It wasn't my intent. I intend to, as I'm doing tonight, speak out a little bit earlier in the process when I see something I disagree with. The motivation that I had for making alterations to the zoning text amendment really comes to my analysis of, of how driving habits and transportation habits are changing and will have to change over the next few years. I don't think any of us actually knows what our transportation infrastructure may look like ten or fifteen years from now, as we retool to deal with climate change. But what we do know today is that millennials are driving less than their parents. We do know that ride-sharing services are growing. We know that as cars get more and more expensive, that fewer and fewer people can afford new cars. And there's a whole kind of plethora of, of transportation issues that lead to the fact, or my belief, that we will need less parking in the future. Now, this dovetails very well with some of the other village priorities that we have. So Oregon has problems with flooding. We have less permeable surface, impermeable surfaces, there'll be more ground to suck up water. Having less large parking lots in the village will hopefully lead to greater densities, which will make our village more walkable, more bikeable, which is something that people have expressed they want. It will also reduce the amount of utilities that we have to put in ground and the amount of money that we have to spend maintaining them. So hopefully, it will help keep our taxes under control, which is a major concern, given all the building, generational building projects we have on our plate. I'm hoping that reducing parking will also reduce the cost of building new homes and apartments, and hopefully help keep rents and, and mortgages a little bit under, more under control for people. And I think it'll make a more beautiful village. So I'd urge you, please, to support the alterations that we put in place. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up to anybody else for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this as well? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Teresa Nelson, 245 Drummond Circle in Oregon. I represent the Oregon Nature Alliance. We have, of, of our members, we have forty-five that are village residents. I've spoken to the planning commission before on the parking requirements, and I've spoken at the village board meeting, so I'm, I'm going to keep this one pretty short and brief for you. The Oregon Nature Alliance supports the, the changes in the ordinance that reduce the parking requirements, and in general, we encourage the village to continue to look for ways that enhance other ways of transportation, safe bike and pedestrian access across town, public transportation, things like that. So appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we will close.
Oh, one more. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Brent Teske. I live at 126 Johnson Street here in Oregon, and I have spoken at the village board meeting as well about this topic. A lot of my points have been very similar to what has already been said. One of the other things I would like to mention is that by having some of these larger parking requirements, we also effectively limit what kinds of development we can even place in our village. For example, if you have a lot and you want to build a restaurant on it, but it doesn't have enough space for that parking, that lot ends up being unused. If it's not zoned residential, you can't put a house there. You can't put apartments there because we have too high of parking requirements for that. So it helps depress property values in areas where we could have an improved tax base as well. It increases the cost of development, as Mike pointed out, in some areas. That's a significant amount of money that goes into the cost of your home, and then that gets passed along to, in an apartment, the tenants pay more for that. If it's a business, I pay more for that as a customer. If it's a public facility, all of us pay more for that in terms of taxes. So I really think that we have a lot of reasons to justify decreasing our parking requirements, but I have not heard any compelling evidence saying that Oregon is somehow unique and needs more parking than all of these neighboring communities, and then what the Institute of Transportation Engineers recommends as a de facto national guideline. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One more? Go ahead.
Well, thank you. My name is Ray Vogler. I live at 299 North Main Street in Oregon, where all the construction's been taking place, and the roads are looking great, so thank you for all the work on that. I have some prepared comments, so I think I might just go through them, even though you might have heard some of these ideas before. But the first thing I want to do is thank the village board for voting to move forward with requirement changes for parking. I think it takes a lot, you know, a lot of thought, a lot of work and dedication to make these kind of changes. And then I also want to thank the planning commission for holding this hearing, letting us speak about this issue again. I think that's very important. And what I want to say is currently in Oregon, and I'm very much involved in the community, I do a lot of walking, living on Main Street, I do notice that right now we do have large and underutilized parking lots. And I think people have said this before, but I think it's something to really reflect on. So for example, Dorn Hardware, or the BMO Bank, UW Health Services are just a few examples. And what happens with those is that that cost by businesses gets absorbed into their business itself. So that's money that they have to take up, and then also to maintain. In addition to that, I think it's prohibitive for other businesses. If they see that there are these huge parking lots they need to build by requirement, that they might be less likely to want to build here. So I think that what you're doing is excellent. You're moving in another direction, and I know we really want to bring in new businesses to the community. And I think that parking lots have costs for citizens as well. We know there's a lot of water issues here in Oregon, and of course, we know pavement will contribute to that, so that is one issue. But another one I think that is real important is that there are many studies that are done that said that when people are around green space, and they're around trees, they're in parks, they're out in nature, that it's actually very healthy for people in terms of their physical health and their mental health. And I think that's something we want to promote, and by having less parking, we're actually providing more green space, especially in the downtown area, where, you know, it's a lot of pavement right now, and a lot of sidewalks. So I think we're doing excellent things by trying to change the, the parking code. And here's just a couple quick ideas. By reducing the parking, we're going to have less urban sprawl, we'll protect the farmlands around us, we'll protect the wetlands, which we have a lot of, and also the wildlife, the native plants, all of those very important elements of why we love to live here in Oregon. We've been here twenty-five years, and I'm, I'm not moving anywhere. This is where we want to be. This is our home. And the other thing is that as we reduce parking, I think we also reduce how people travel. So if they have less parking spaces, people will, I believe, start to do more biking, do more walking. And I think we see that pattern already because of people of Alpine color that love to be out there, and I think that's something we can be doing more of. And it is definitely a focus, I know, of the village board and the plan commission. So I give you a lot of credit for that because we're all working in the same direction. And then the last couple issues have to do just with costs, and the fact that by reducing parking for some of these construction costs, others have said that, that reduction in parking and costs can also be passed on to the consumer. And so therefore, we can have more affordable housing units here, and I know that's a very high priority here in Oregon for the village board, and also to have a little bit more diversity in our community. So all of these issues are interconnected, and the more I read about them, the more I do the research, I see that a lot of cities are starting to move in that direction, and I know that we are, and I want to say kudos to you for, for helping us move further into the 21st century and the new patterns for parking and driving and modes of transportation. So I really appreciate you listening to me, and also appreciate what you're doing on the board. I have been on a board once, and I know there's a lot of packets to read and a lot of work to do. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anybody else that I might have missed? All right, seeing none, we'll open up the planning commission comments. Anybody have any comments for anybody, or comments that need to be made, or want to be made?
Just one comment for me. Overall, I support what's proposed. Elise, you made the comment about senior high school. Did that change from one to two?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's a mistake. And I know it's probably not in our near future by any means, but as somebody that travels to quite a few high schools, most teachers are going to drive. And so one teacher, one space per teacher, I think, is pretty essential.
And then there might be other planning commission comments. I did want to add one thing, Don, I forgot to say at the beginning. Thanks to Mike for just providing a little bit more context on why he brought this up and kind of the process. I think there was all good intentions and that, I think, just the process and having some of these changes incorporated maybe earlier on would have been more efficient. One thing I want to mention, and of course, this could be opening another can of worms, but I did have a nice discussion with Mike after the August village board meeting and just understanding kind of where, you know, why he brought these forward. Other communities, including Fort Atkinson, actually have parking maximums rather than, so, rather than minimums, they actually cap the number of parking spaces that are allowed for new construction, and some communities go even further and don't have any parking requirements at all. I think those are, you know, options that down the road with maybe a more comprehensive update to our zoning code, which is certainly needed, is something that we should talk about, decide if that's something that's appropriate for Oregon. But in all reality, something like a parking maximum or elimination of a parking requirement, you know, may or may not be appropriate for Oregon, but that moves the needle a lot further on helping achieve some of these goals for reduced, impervious surface, you know, reducing the cost of construction overall, things like that. You know, we saw just with the Culver's Plan, that might be the amount of parking spaces they feel they need to support their business, but it's far exceeding what our parking minimums are, so if we, you know, we could probably nitpick all day about parking minimums, but in all reality, a lot of businesses and homeowners, too, are going to provide the parking they feel is needed for their site. Things like parking maximums, you know, have more of that effect. But I think other items in our zoning code about helping speed up the development process, especially for affordable housing, incorporating higher design standards for energy efficiency, low-impact design, all of those things, I think, all contribute to helping, you know, address climate change, reduce the carbon footprint within the village, encourage diversity in affordable housing. So just, that's a little bit of what I had my memo to the village board when I came with this draft text amendment, but just want to put some context in that. I think, you know, I'm comfortable with the changes here that are proposed, but I think it's probably the start or part of a larger conversation about how we can... it's probably the start or part of a larger conversation about how we can, you know, foster the type of growth and development that we want to see in the village and use our zoning code as a tool for that.
Thank you. I think that, you know, we still have the flexibility of 25% in our zoning code for parking, that's something that Fort Atkinson doesn't have. So we have a little bit of flexibility even with this, and we also have the PUD process. So, you know, we, there's still workarounds for an issue that might come up, so. So we should have some comfort in all of those tools that we still have in our belt. Anybody else have any comments, questions?
I've got a few comments, because I was a little confused by all this after we sent it to the board, and then I think I missed that board meeting and read in the paper that they changed it, and it was all related to the library and the commercial uses. I don't have any real concerns over 350 versus 400 in business uses. It comes down to a few peak times a year, people can choose not to go to that business or that restaurant if they can't find a place to park, you know, it's not a big problem. I am having some heartburn over the changes in the multifamily section. Oregon is finally seeing some larger multifamily buildings going up, and when those kinds of places are underparked, the peak is daily or nightly when everybody's home, so it's an ongoing, everyday occurrence when there's a shortage of parking. People stretch out into the neighborhood and park on streets, which sometimes of the year works, but in November, alternate sides, snow plowing, it creates a lot of problems. I am just appalled every time I go to Madison in the winter and park somewhere and walk to a hockey game or something, and the condition of the streets and the plowing, and it has a lot to do with the parking. I don't know that, you know, the city crews can ever clear all the snow away because there's always cars parked where they're not supposed to be on both sides of the street and everywhere else. So I am really, really not, not too sure that in the multifamily sense, reducing to these levels is wise. I don't disagree, you know, with the trends and the things that Mike referenced. I think some of that, most of that is happening, but some of those trends could, in time, reverse themselves, and people could start buying more cars and driving more, and I'm nervous about creating large multifamily developments that don't have a space to deal with that, so. And I, really, that component of that I wasn't aware of until I got my packet. I thought these changes were just related to the library and the commercial uses at 350 versus 400, and just a couple of days ago, learned that we're also adjusting numbers on all the residential and multifamily uses.
Yeah, maybe I can put Ben on the spot a little bit here, since he's got a lot more experience with other zoning codes than I do, but I imagine the idea with kind of just the broad brush of 1.5 spaces per unit is, on average, you know, the studios in one bedrooms, probably just one person, maybe a couple, you know, maybe a tense more to the one car per household, and then the two and three bedrooms, maybe that's more the two-car households, and on average, that kind of ends up at 1.5. Ben, in other kind of suburban Dane County communities, do you see that this, if they have this requirement, does it seem like that's adequate for multifamily parking?
Well, I think, yes, in general, most Dane County communities are taking the same approach that you guys are in looking at this and reducing them in terms of where it tiers up to that three-bedroom, in a lot of instances, that could be a family situation where there might still only be two, two cars. And so having that old requirement of 2.5 per three-bedroom, I think that was inherently supposed to be for if there was a third-bedroom type of roommate situation, but reducing that is related to what could be a family situation, for instance, something like that. And as Elise mentioned, yeah, kind of averaging it out over what those different unit types might create in terms of demand. You know, speaking just personally for myself, I live in a large multifamily development building in Madison. We have very little parking in terms of onsite. There's one space per unit, and we park on the street, and my girlfriend, she parks in the parking that we have designated for our unit, and it works. I understand your point about the parking on the street can cause issues in the winter and things along those lines, but I personally have not found it an issue in that personal situation. So I think that's generally along the lines of what we were getting at with, or what the village board was getting at with that change, but I understand, I was at the previous meeting where we tweaked these and talked about it, and you had some concerns, and you brought those forward at that time, so I understand your side of things as well.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will have discussion and a possible recommendation to the village board regarding that's numbers and parents that I'm not going to secure, regarding the Oregon municipal code relating to parking standards. So...
John, can I?
Yeah.
Patrick, which one, which one do you want to make a change to the one you were coming up?
It's the senior high.
Senior high was...
Yeah, I mean...
Do you want to make it? You want...
I would recommend that be one space per teacher and staff member.
Well, now, I mean, tonight's the night to make it.
Yeah, the only thing I don't see in there is any allocation for visitors, but I did, that's the one I have heartburn over. Everything else is fine. Elise, I appreciate your 20,000-foot view, but that change, I don't know how it got made, but currently, it's unrealistic.
Yeah, that's what Fort Atkinson has, and I think regards to visitors, maybe the thought that Fort Atkinson had is that visitors are coming typically on non, during non-school time, so for a football game, or the school musical, or something like that, so you're probably not going to have the full driving student population there in the parking lot at the same time as a, you know, football game is going on, or high school graduation or something. There's always those special events that, you know, here in Oregon, there's on-street parking that, you know, that just spills out onto the neighborhood streets. The other thing, you know, you could discuss changing is, and maybe it doesn't, I'm not sure how the calculations would really change over time, but you could say one space for every two teachers and staff members, maybe you reduce, you know, the percent enrollment, maybe it's 20% of student enrollment. But I think I tend to agree with you from what I've seen. I went to Oregon High School too, and I know that there are some staff and community members that live in our community, but especially in the wintertime, I'm fairly confident the majority of them drove. I also know that as a high schooler, it's pretty exciting to be able to drive to school, and my parents were pretty excited when they didn't have to pick me up after every practice in the evening, so I think there are a lot of student drivers that we see and spilling onto the on-street, you know, parking as well. But again, we may not be building a senior high school for another 100 years, so by that point, maybe zoning doesn't even exist anymore, so.
Agreed, but let's start out on the right foot at this point, and then if it needs to be changed in 20 years, so be it.
Yep.
We may not build a new high school, but if they were to add on to the existing high school, they would effectively use the new parking regulations.
Right, meet them in one.
Correct. Yep.
So do you have enough information, Candy, for the recommendation on seniors or seniors?
Yep, just the one, the one teacher versus two.
Correct, just change that number from two to one.
And so is that a motion from you?
I'll make that motion to recommend to the village board that they approve the parking amendments, as stated, with the only change being the senior high.
Yep. I'm glad.
Do we, do we, before we, I take a second, do we want to get in there any other motion like with the multifamily housing? Scott, do you feel strongly about it?
I don't have a suggestion. I just, like I say, I realized that that was a component of this very recently and have not, not really studied, you know, the impacts of that, or what does that do 190 unit apartment building, or, you know, things like that. So I definitely have concern. I'm not certain that it's, you know, a problem, but it could be a slippery slope.
So this is an example, coming up, a couple of agendas here, we've got North Point Development their conceptual plan, that's 60-unit building, so if this change would end up being adopted, that would be 90 spaces that would be required just for the residential use. They're also proposing some commercial parking spaces as well, and so that's added kind of into their, their whole site plan is, it's more than the 90 spaces, it's covering, you know, both the commercial and residential use. But just as a point of reference, that's for 60-unit building, that would be a requirement of 90 parking spaces at a minimum.
All right, so we have a motion, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Randy, a second? Does everybody understand the motion to move this forward with the exception of the high school, senior high? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, item five, community and miscellaneous business, item A, revised site plan review and possible approval of 281 West Netherwood Road, applicant JT Engineering. Elise, you want to give us some background on this?
Sure, I'm not sure if Doug is out there. Hi Doug, I haven't had a chance to meet you in person yet, so we're really excited to share, if you haven't heard already, that the old Tacy Building on Netherwood Road has been purchased by JT Engineering. There's actually going to be two businesses that are located there. JT Engineering is currently engineering firm, they've got an office in Madison, I believe on the west side, that you'll be moving down to Oregon, and then the back portion of the building that has the loading dock and those larger garage doors will be rented to Icon Robotics, and Doug can probably share a little bit more about what Icon does as well. But that'll be kind of an office use, some spare parts that they'll, you know, be shipping out and holding for some of their robotic projects around the country. But the changes that are being proposed are mostly just to the loading dock area, very minor. There's a need to have a drive-in overhead door, and then improving some ADA access to the rear of the building that will be rented to Icon. So construction plans are attached. I did just get today a comment letter from Rupert Milkie with the revised plans that are shown here in the packet, and he's comfortable with all those changes, so no outstanding engineering comments at this point. Planned industrial zoning district, so just standard site plan review, we're recommending approval, and I'll ask Doug if he wants to come up and just introduce his company and share a little bit about the planned construction over here.
Doug, would you like to come up and do a dog and tony?
Well, engineer doesn't want to. No, we, no, our goal is, I've been a resident of the village area, lived in the village for 10 years, moved out to the township, but we're a 35-person engineering firm that is growing extremely fast, about 20 to 30% a year. Our goal is to make Oregon our corporate headquarters. We have about 100 employees statewide, so bringing some good jobs. I've already had two employees relocate and buy houses in the last week in Oregon, so that's exciting news for me as a long-term resident. We were, it's a bigger building than I wanted, so the opportunity came up, it was definitely the front-end office space was our space. Icon Robotics, for those that don't know it, they're a palletizing robotics company worldwide. They are based out of New Zealand. This is their first footprint in the US. Their largest client is Pepsi Free to Lay, so I'm excited to bring them on, it matches up with our engineering. And I think from a permeability standpoint, I chuckled when I heard the parking space stuff, because that was, we were losing one space with this change, one of the comments. And we have a lot in the back, so most of our staff is remote throughout the state, you know, works on the open construction sites. So as a business, I agree with Elise's statement, we know what our parking needs are, so I'm glad the village is looking at that because permeability is an issue in this village of Oregon, in my experience, so. Other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward with what we're looking to do. I doubt anybody would ever notice any of the changes, other than a larger door at one bay. We will be, we just submitted for state approval for the build-out. They're putting four offices, but most of it will stay warehouse, shipping logistics for them coming out of New Zealand.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? So this is what you're proposing, basically a sidewalk, is to accommodate access to a second tenant space essentially?
Yeah, a sidewalk, and then one of the loading docks will become a drive-in, 10-by-14 overhead door, so.
The only comment I would say is, double check, I'm just looking at this picture that was given to us, you don't have enough handicap stalls for the number of parking you've got, so just check your ratios on that. It's just, just re-straight the thing.
Yeah, and that was something we probably just overlooked in this middle of it.
Yeah, it's all good. All right, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to make a recommendation for approval of the site plan. Does anybody want to make that motion, Randy? Anybody want a second?
I'll second it.
You have a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, good luck here.
Thanks, Doug.
Item B, conceptual discussion with Dan Bertler and representatives from Third Car LLC regarding the proposal for Third Car Garage Auto Condos at 102 Alpine Parkway. Welcome, gentlemen, please give us your name and address, and a little bit about your project.
Sure, I'm Tom Sunning. I live at 2503 Keenan Road in McFarland, Wisconsin.
I'm Ryan McKagan, actually live in Wisconsin Bill.
And we also have Mike Walker's back here, who's part of our team as well. Dan was not able to make it tonight from Supreme. So Third Car Garage is, if you're familiar with garage condos, it's kind of a newer concept. There's, it's been around for quite, probably about the last 15 or so years more prevalent in, throughout the United States. They're getting more common throughout Wisconsin. Some, there's some current garage condos in the area, one store shop USA, they have presence in McFarland and Wanakee and Stoughton and a few other places around the area. And then also, a new, there's a new garage condo that just was built in Middleton called Autovault, that will be there in the midst of their kind of brand opening at this point. What we're looking to do is kind of create a space for people that are kind of outgrowing their homes, their, you know, with their hobbies and their collections and their, kind of like the, for me personally, I had, I make lake maps out of wood, and I took over our home garage, and I, my wife can't park in it. And, you know, so I started looking around for these spaces and, you know, trying to find a spot where I could kind of expand, where I could go to kind of get out of the garage and get our parking space back. And the, started looking around, looking at the storage shops and stuff like that, and they just weren't available, you know, it just, there's nothing that was for sale. And couldn't, you know, couldn't find a place to kind of, where I could lease a space at a point where I could still sell my maps and make a profit on them, for example. And started looking more at, was talking with Mike, who was looking at doing mini warehouses, storage warehouses, you know, just like, you know, public storage. And talked to him about the concept of, he's a garage condo, and he, you know, it was like, so we started growing the idea and the concept, and did a lot of research, and, you know, the, and, you know, basically determined that, hey, this is something that would solve a problem I have, but also solve the problem that a lot of other people have. And looking at doing the research, you know, these, these facilities are, you know, very well sold out in the locations that they're building. They are, you know, there's, there's a demand for not a storage unit, you know, people don't want to go to the storage unit, bring their stuff, they want to kind of, for the type of clientele that are coming in here, they're, you know, they're the ones that have five cars that are the, you know, the Corvettes and the Ferraris or whatever, and they want to put them, and they want to have them on display, and they want to kind of show them off. And, you know, other people that would be using these spaces would essentially be kind of building their, you know, man cave, so to speak, you know, where they come in there and they just have their, you know, whatever collection that they can just kind of sit around, enjoy, and... You know, where they come in there and they just have their, you know, whatever collection that they can just kind of sit around, enjoy and kind of, you know, do their thing. But not, you know, not restricted to their house. Um, and with a lot of the, you know, the developments that are going up around the area, there's a lot of restrictions that are being put in like, you know, already neighborhoods and whatnot, where, um, you know, they can't have a, you know, they can't build a shed in their backyard. They, you know, they can't get the, um, permits to do that. They can't, you know, they don't have the third car garage on their house because of, you know, some municipalities are limiting to, to car garages. Um, for example, and so they don't have the space to do the things that they would like to do anymore. Um, and so instead of compromising on, you know, where they're living, these, you know, these units are something that would be, um, as a, an option for them to look at. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Elise, you want to give us a little bit of a, uh, sixty thousand foot view on the project?
It seems to be hovering way up here tonight. So, um, so again, thanks gentlemen for coming and sharing a little bit about the project. Uh, just to orient folks, this is, uh, Highway CC, it's the Alpine Parkway, um, former OCB Bank Building, New Village Hall, uh, is right here, corner. This is the site that, uh, we did have a conceptual plan for the Great Dane earlier this year. This time, um, that's, you know, not moving forward on the site. Um, so just to orient folks, um, this combination of uses, uh, largely the personal storage facility, even though, you know, it, uh, it, it's kind of a upgraded storage unit. Um, and really these, um, you know, nice quality garages with really high quality, um, exterior materials, as you saw through the slides I was flipping through. Um, this use on planned business zoning district, um, lot here, which is what this one is, would require planned development zoning. A personal storage facility is not allowed even as a conditional use in the zoning district. So they would have to go through our GDP and SIP process. Um, I do understand that these types of uses are popping up in other places, including in Dane County. Um, and it's certainly a use that there's demand for. Uh, I think, you know, it's, it's obviously conceptual at this time, so don't have a formal recommendation. I think it's a really great concept and a really nice site plan. I know I did have some initial comments about some of the fencing and it felt a little bit, um, a little bit like a compound with some really tall, solid, um, gates and fences. And so I think this is a, a nice improvement to that site plan. Um, personally, I think, uh, this is not the appropriate use for this corner, which is an entrance to a neighborhood. It's also kind of our, one of our main entrance corridors to the village. Um, and I think the site might, and this use might fit a little bit better on a quieter, uh, site. And there might be some higher and better uses for this particular site, given a lot of the public amenities there nearby with the park, Village Hall, food pantry, the bike path, things like that. Um, in the neighborhood as well. I think it's a little bit of a odd use to have as an entrance to a neighborhood. But I think it's a great concept and I would love to work with, uh, um, visitors to help find an appropriate site within the village. I think this would be a nice addition to the village. I just, I'm not sure if this is the right location and would love some feedback from the planning commission on that as well.
Okay. And, yes, Randy?
Go. So, um, I, I, I like cars. I had a nineteen fifty-six Lincoln, always looking for a place to store it. I like your design, but I have to sort of echo what Elise said. That the feeling that I'm getting for myself is that this is not the right place. Entrance to the village, the neighborhood, um, that, that's the biggest problem that I, I have is having it on, this is a primo lot now as we come into the, the village. So I just want to sort of be upfront. I, I, I like cars and all that, but I just don't, for me, I, I don't like this spot for, for this. So, have nothing against what it is, but just being honest.
Without giving you my opinion on this, I'll ask you two questions. What is it you like about this site? And have you looked for any other sites in Oregon?
The, you know, we, we have, we do like this, this location. Um, I, I frequent the, the park across the street, riding my bike along the paths and everything. It's something that I do quite, quite often with my family. Um, we like the, the, the spot with the, you know, kind of the pond that's in the distance. The, you know, because it is visible from what would be the owner's clubhouse, um, sitting there to kind of enjoy that space. And also off to the, you know, looking at the, the bike path across the street. And then they'll hold on all the park over there as well. And it's, it's a convenient location for, um, around the, the area. It's, it's easy to get to from both, you know, from, you know, obviously Oregon. But, you know, Fitchburg, McFarland, Madison, it's, it's a, it's an easy spot to find and, and get to. Um, and, and good, you know, from, from that standpoint. Um, we have looked around the area, uh, for additional, uh, land options in Oregon. This was kind of the, the one spot that we had focused on up to this point.
Anything else?
Uh, I'm going to withhold the comment.
Okay.
Other members.
Anybody else? Larry?
I would, uh, fall into where the comments made about this really is not the right location in our village for this. I, I wish we could find another spot for it and maybe we can. That just, uh, uh, I, I recognize the, how, uh, the need for what you're doing. And it certainly is a, a front edge type of, of, uh, facility. And, um, but I do think that it's, uh, it's just not the right entryway, uh, business or structure that, that, that sells the village.
Anybody?
Um, I'll echo pretty much the same comments. Um, we, we've given up a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, commercial, you know, type space along CC. This is a semi-commercial use, but it's sort of a private use, you know, given to however many units you have there. Like, like the concept, I'm familiar with it. And, you know, I think we could use it in the area, but I, I don't like it on this lot.
Agree.
Mark, have anything to add? The only thing I'm going to say is that if you choose to move forward with this, there are some things that we'll need to see in order to give some level of comfort. You know, hours of operation, you, yourself have said that you use this after hours to make your stuff. But what comfort level would we have to allow this to happen next to a residential district? Cause you back up to duplexes or? So we'll want to understand how your hours of operation are handled and, and how you plan to sort of handle those things. Um, what are the types of uses that you're going to allow? Um, again, uh, giving them, uh, some comfort level with residential to the back. And, and that plays into the security level, obviously from both aspects of, of your users and from the neighbors behind. We've got zoning code requirements between industrial and residential districts. And, um, those will need to be met. But I would certainly expect that we'll want to have, um, a higher level. And that doesn't mean concertina wire. Um, but something that, um, is aesthetically pleasing and still is functional and attractive. Um, how you handle your, your trash, um, in stormwater, you know, simple little things you need to think through. Um, the site is really densely, um, developed right now and I'm not sure how you would handle those. So, um, snow removal, simple things. So, uh, it sounds like you, you've got some feedback from the planning commission, not all of it positive. But if you choose to move forward, you'll need to address everything that's been said, along with all of the details. They give you enough to chew on?
It does. I appreciate the feedback. And some, you know, from the, it's based on that, you know, you're looking for, in that location, something more like the Great Dane that was proposed previously. Is that, would that be a more valid statement? Something that would?
I, I think kind of a, a more of a public use, also something that creates more job opportunities. Um, again, it's something that is, uh, be more open and welcoming to all members of, um, the village would possibly be more appropriate on the site. I have a couple of ideas about, um, I'd like to hear maybe where else you've looked in the village and would be happy to follow up with you afterwards about a couple of other sites. I think based on the size of what you have here, or maybe even something a little bit larger, this could be a good fit for. And probably an easier pathway in terms of zoning and site plan approvals. So we can circle back on that too and see if some of those other options might be.
Definitely would appreciate that.
A little smoother for you.
Yeah, cause one of the, one of the things, we have a lot of different building designs that we can, you know, from a two unit to a six unit, basically. So we can fit in kind of weird spaces. Um, so it's, you know, if you have, I'd be very open to hearing what you might, like, suggest.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be happy to follow up with you on that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Item five C, conceptual discussion with North Point Development in Dream Lane Real Estate regarding a proposed mixed-use development at eight thirty-one and eight seventy-one Oregon Center Drive. Do you want to go first, Elise?
I'll go first. You didn't let me go first last time.
Sorry.
That's okay.
That's because they were sitting on.
Yeah, they were topping at the bed over there. Um, so Lance and Sean from, uh, North Point and Dream Lane. I know you guys, uh, got to meet them earlier this summer while I was out. Um, so mention before this, uh, site has changed a little bit since the last time you saw it. So, um, due to some site access issues, I'm sure you'll go into a little bit more background on, uh, the site that they're now taking a look at is, um, over on Oregon Center Drive. Uh, I'll pull up the report. So, um, these lots were part of a comp plan amendment proposal last year. Um, these particular lots were proposed to be entirely multifamily, um, for the mixed residential is the, the, uh, comp plan use category. Uh, that comp plan amendment did not, it failed. So, um, they remained as, as a central mixed use. Um, it was all, which allows a lot of flexibility for a variety of different mix of uses, whether it's in the same building or taking up, um, you know, part of a floor or an entire first floor with residential. There's a lot of possibilities for what's allowed and, and done as precedent in the central mixed use area. Um, these sites, I think, um, you guys are really excited about the opportunities that, um, these sites allow to, you know, be within a neighborhood, have access to some commercial spaces and businesses that are already there, established within the neighborhood. Um, there's some unique topography here with the sites that they're a little bit lower than the park and the duplexes above. So taller building, um, has an advantage of looking a little bit less tall, um, with where that site is located. We did have a neighborhood meeting and I think, um, have some slides in there just summarizing some of those comments. So I'll let you go through that. But we had a neighborhood meeting on Tuesday night, uh, two days ago here. We have three community members attend, but we had a really lively, uh, open conversation. A lot of Q and A and back and forth and suggestions about group lines and uses that they thought would be appropriate within the neighborhood. So I thought that was, um, you know, great that the developer was willing to take another night out of their week to sit down with neighbors. We mailed everybody in the Oregon parts neighborhood. Um, and then invited them, of course, to tonight's meeting as well. So, um, they've really gone above and beyond in terms of reaching out to the neighbors. There's still, um, the intent that this would be a mixed income project. And all of them speak a little bit more about that too. Um, but just wanted to update everybody and kind of where the site is today. And do feel that with what they're proposing with a mixed use building, I think this is definitely consistent with, um, both the comp plan, what it says for what central mixed use should look like. And then they'd be pursuing planned development zoning here on the lot for different flexibilities with building height and, um, things like that. So we would likely see, if they decide to move forward, the GDP probably at the November meeting. Um, as they'll also be, um, applying for WIDA funding, which is usually due in December. So I will flip over to the PowerPoint that Sean sent me tonight and I'll let them take it from there.
Hello everyone. Uh, thanks for seeing us again, planning commissioners. In the interest of time, and I know that most of you saw us in August, uh, which was just two months ago. I'll be kind of short and sweet. Um, this is another conceptual meeting, obviously, like Elise was just saying. Um, real quick, that site, the previous site we had, uh, fifty-two twenty-seven CC ended up not just worked, uh, not working out, just couldn't come to terms on that property. So we had to move on. One of the funny things was when I first reached out to Elise before you went on returning leave, this was one of the options that you kind of mentioned. Uh, from my development role, one of my favorite, uh, parts of this job is I always go to the city, just kind of ask where you guys would like to see affordable first and foremost. And that was one of the options Elise had, had. And so, uh, you know, fast forward to that, the, the previous, uh, lot we had following through. This one kind of came up and I think inherently it works out as we think it through. I think it works out better for, for all, all, all parties, uh, going forward. Can you go to the next slide real quick, please? Um, this is one of the things that we updated the last time I was here. This slide wasn't updating. You can see the projects in Dane County that we have, um, uh, going on. Um, I think we have five active ones and three on the, in the, in the books. This is one of the three on the books, uh, either in, under construction or about to be under construction. Um, we live here, Sean lives in Fitchburg. I live in Verona. Um, I do a lot of, spend a lot of time at the hockey rink here with our kids. Uh, I skate adult Monday nights there myself. So, uh, we're invested in this community. We really, we really feel strongly about making this project successful here. That's why we're kind of fine with this, uh, separate site here. Uh, next slide. Uh, just a quick review, uh, North Point Development. Uh, Sean is on the North Point side. They're partnering with me. I'm the co-developer. They're the lead developer. The two other partners, uh, at North Point have had success in the development world themselves. Sean came on from WIDA, a fifteen-year career at WIDA, eight years as the, um, director of commercial lending. So he knows this world. Uh, North Point was created specifically to address the affordable housing or lack thereof of affordable housing in our state. So that's what we spec, best to specialize in. Uh, I came on about a year later after spending three years on the Fitchburg Planning Commission. And one of the things that's, uh, we're real proud of is about fif, under, just under fifteen hundred units under management throughout our state. That's fifteen hundred units that we've added, uh, affordable housing opportunities in our state of Wisconsin. So, uh, you'll see at the bottom of the, a couple of the ones we have going on here. Uh, next slide, please. Um, when we, Sean will get into the nuts and bolts in a second again, but just to kind of remind you of what, what we're planning. This is, uh, our Verona project, um, somewhat similar. Uh, it's a little, it's a little bigger, but somewhat similar retail on the bottom. Um, this is a three-story building with a little, uh, red brick on the far end there and a little, uh, white stucco on this side. Kind of gives you a feel of what we're kind of proposing here. As we change locations, one of the nice things or unique things that we have is a little commercial activity. Uh, given that zoning where that building is, we're going to have the opportunity to put in about thirty-one hundred square foot of commercial. So as we go through this process and get your feedback and or support, we'd love to hear what you guys feel about it. Um, next slide, please. This is another quick review. This is our, um, Uno project on Mineral Point. Um, Pizza Uno Building is going to turn into that development. Again, a little larger than the project we have developed here, but, um, still pretty unique and adding in a good decent amount of affordable units, uh, to the Madison community. I hope guys.
I'm sorry.
No worries. I was just going to say this is a pretty.
You're getting a rhythm going.
Right. This one's pretty unique and interesting because that building in front is the Ganzer Farmhouse. It's a historic building that we're moving. Um, it's actually kind of where the curve is in the park, on the parking lot to the right. We're moving it to the front as part of this project. So I'm really excited to do something like that. I've never done that.
I want to find out the day that you're moving that house and come watch.
Oh, I'm going to film it. Don't you worry.
Okay.
I've done it for everyone.
We haven't figured out where we're going to put the building.
Right. But we have to keep it.
Yeah, for a while, but.
But I had to stay there. Now you go to the next slide. And this one, uh, is our McFarland project. And this, we kind of keep going back to this. We use this a lot in our neighborhood meeting. This is very similar to what we're proposing here. A three-story elevator building, uh, and your site will be, uh, it's out to the west. And then the two townhouses on your site will be to the right. And this is kind of just a, a view of that. Um, you go to that next slide real quick unless you, yeah. This is the other side of that view, the three-story. You can kind of see the mix of materials. I, I picked these slides to kind of show you guys. You can see the mix of materials that we use. And one of the things that came out of the neighborhood meeting was, um, they'd like to see some different design options. They'd like the, um, the lady used the term homely. I don't really like to use that term describing, uh, our, our project. But she, what she was saying is she wants to feel more like a home, uh, area, not so commercial. So we've got some ideas to, uh, when we come back next time, hopefully we'll, um, modify the pulpit, uh, put a little point or a little, uh, uh, what's the term look for?
Hip roof, gable roof?
Gable.
Yeah, the gables and parapets.
Gable, parapets, yeah. And, uh, make it look a little more friendly to them. And we had a great meeting. It was actually a really great meeting, I thought. Um, they threw out a lot of stuff. And one of the things Sean will talk about is that commercial space. Um, since the WIDA, uh, structure allows us to, or makes us have to pay for the project without using the commercial space. We don't have to rent that at full market rate. So we can, we were asking, we still are asking for feedback on what the neighborhood would like to see in that commercial space. What would fit? There's a drive-through there. Um, it's kind of just conceptual for the time being, but, um, what would you like to, to see there that would make the neighborhood beneficial? You know, some of the comments were ice cream, pizza, coffee, dry cleaning. And we could look for that if there's local businesses that might be looking to move. This might be a great opportunity for them. So I think that's the end of my slides. Yeah. Uh, thank you for your time.
Yeah, again, my name is Sean O'Brien. Um, very happy to be here. Nice to meet you all in person.
Sorry.
And, yeah, it's nice to be in person. And again, we're talking about eight thirty-one, eight seventy-one Oregon Center Drive. We have both of those lots under contract. It's about a three-hundred-foot move to the north from the last site that we had talked about, so we're still in the general same area. Like Lane said, you know, we're very, very happy to have a development opportunity in Oregon, but, you know, we do find this site to be superior for what we're trying to accomplish, and I think what we can bring to the community as a whole. Next slide. So, just, you know, one of the things that we try to do at our development is, you know, we're not trying to put too much density on any one site. I believe this site is almost four acres, we're looking at sixty units, but we also really like to, you know, bring in different housing types into all of our developments. So, we have the three-story apartment building, that's forty-eight units, and then two six-unit townhomes. The six-unit townhomes will all be three bedrooms, you know, they'll all be targeted to families. And then, in the, the, the three-story apartment building, we plan to have about thirty-one hundred square feet of retail space. Like Lane said, in the tax credit program, WIDA and our tax credit investors are not going to give us any credit for commercial tenant income that we were going to have at the project. Even if we were to have a lease in place by the time that we've, you know, applied, they'll discount that. So, the benefit there is that when we go to lease that space out, we, we won't need, you know, twenty-five, thirty bucks a square foot in order to make the building financially feasible. Really allows us to work with the community, find a user. Again, like Lane said, the, the neighborhood feedback is pizza, ice cream, coffee. One of the things that we thought was really important was having a drive-through in, in a, in my experience, or at least, you know, kind of where the industry is going, if you want to draw a retail tenant to a multi-use building, you're going to have to have some sort of drive-through. But these plans that we've come up with, they're very preliminary. If we were to get good feedback and, and kind of get positive feedback, if this meeting we come back in a month, we'd have three-D renderings, we'd have a landscaping plan, we'd have a lot more to show. So, this, again, is, is to really just get the conversation going. Originally, we had proposed a plan that had the building a little bit further set back. Ben had requested that we move the building a little bit closer to the street, make it more of a downtown feel. And we had some mixed comments about that with the neighbors. I think there's pros and cons to wherever you put the building. Actually, you know, going back and, and kind of measuring out where the building sits now, we're about twenty-five feet setback from Oregon Center Drive, and about forty-five feet setback on the, I guess that would be the west side where the drive-through is. So, we have really a lot of room to landscape around that, that, that corner. We have room in front of the building to have a lot of green space and some patio space for the retail component, but then it also gives us about thirty feet at the north end of the property between our parking lot and the, and the park and the duplexes to the north, which really allows us to, you know, maintain that topography without, you know, putting in retaining wall. At the, the neighborhood meeting, we talked about putting a fence along that line, and actually might be profitable to have just some, some tree lining there, more landscaping that would, you know, kind of buffer. But one of the things that we, you know, really like about the site is that our surrounding neighbors are going to already be about ten to fifteen feet above, you know, above the, above this property. And so, the height that we've proposed, which is a three-story flat roof, won't look that tall, or at least hopefully won't look as tall as it sits kind of at the bottom of the, of the hill, if you will. If you can go to the next slide. This is just some, a slide of some of the standard finishes. So, we, we are going to be talking about workforce housing. North Point Development definitely, you know, is in the quality, affordable workforce housing space. We use coarse countertops, LVP flooring, you know, high-end cabinets, you know, nice amenities inside the project. The apartment building will have a community room, exercise room, storage facilities to go along with, to go along with the, the commercial space. Next slide, please. So, this is our first kind of kick at the, the apartment building, and my wife's not a fan, so we'll definitely be looking to put some more, you know, I guess, some more color into the plan. The feedback that we had received at the, the neighborhood meeting is that definitely we'd like to see some variations in the parapet, parapets of the building, you know, maybe, you know, put some gables or, or some sort of other, you know, unique architecture and design. The, the goal was to have the colors kind of fit into, you know, the earth tones of the neighborhood. So, we had a, a pretty good start, but I do feel like if we come back in a month, we're going to, you know, have a lot more to go on and, and can bring you something that's a lot more designed out. But we like to use Mason Rehonor Buildings, Borden Matten for design, James Hardy Board, and, you know, all those types of high, highly efficient, sustainable materials on the exterior of the building. And we can come back to this slide later for, for your feedback. We put this slide in, into the, the slide deck for tonight. We actually are proposing something similar in Manona. It's going to be a four-story building with the same, you know, two six-unit townhomes, and we're a little bit further ahead, so this is a rendering of what those townhomes are going to look like. So, this is, you know, a really great view as if you're kind of in the middle of the site, looking at the, the six-unit townhome buildings. It's a different color, by the way. Actually, this is where I'm going to struggle, because I can barely read. So, you know, just quickly go through, you know, some, some more just kind of details about the building. Right now, we're proposing a, a flat roof, we're about thirty-eight feet. We had a long conversation about flat versus pitch roof, and again, it kind of settled in, let's stick with flat, and, you know, try to find some ways to improve the design. Again, we're about fifteen feet below the elevations of Oregon Parks Avenue, which I think is very beneficial for parking. A lot of discussion on parking tonight. We, we have currently a hundred and twenty stalls. If we allocate those stalls ninety to the residential units, there's just a good amount of underground parking, and then each, each townhome would have a single-stall garage. And then, that would leave us with thirty stalls for retail use. Definitely more opportunities for green space. I think there's a couple of places on our site plan that could easily be swapped out for additional green space in lieu of parking, and I think there is a, a pretty neat opportunity to put some diagonal parking into Oregon Center Drive. I know that there's some already, some parking stalls this lot that are near Mulligan's, but, you know, could we continue that down the road and, and kind of swap out some green space for that? Kind of skipping down, and I'll, I'll come back up. You were planning, this project is, we're planning this project costs about eighteen million dollars to kind of give you an idea of the, the, the high-quality materials that we're going to use. And, and that will be a cost that would not be requested, you know, at all by the village. We're not going to be requesting TIF. I don't believe this is in a TIF zone, and, you know, we're not considering that as a financial option. I can tell the committee today that we've received some, some decent, well, really good news, I would say. When we were looking at the previous site, we applied to Dane County Affordable Housing Fund, and they awarded our project six hundred and thirty thousand dollars of, of affordable housing funds. We were concerned that by switching sites that they wouldn't let us, you know, switch sites and, and keep the funds. They've confirmed today that they would allow us to keep the six hundred and thirty thousand. And so, we already have a, a nice shot in the arm of, you know, some, some low-cost, below-market, you know, gap financing for the project to kind of help us to get there. With that financing, they do require Energy Star certification and EPA Indoor Air Plus certification. So, on top of those, WIDA requires that all of their projects be Wisconsin Rebuild Homes certified. Likely that the project would have solar panels on the roof of the apartment building, which, you know, and other, other projects have been put to reduce ninety percent of the common area electrical usage. So, we, we really sized up a decent-sized solar, solar panel system on the top of our apartment buildings, and it's been going, going pretty well. We're currently under construction in a project right to the north on Lacy Road. It's called the Limerick. It's a hundred and twenty-seven unit senior and, and family project, Lacy Road in Fitchburg. Again, we talked about the onsite amenities. I would say that the project's going to be professionally third-party managed, and we will have onsite management. One of the nice things about a project of this size is we can have a, an onsite management person, you know, at the property full-time, which, you know, is, is something that the neighbors were very interested in. And then, each of the units will have its own washer, dryer, dishwasher, and internet's included for all the tenants at no cost. Next slide. So, I know that the, the village is, is definitely mentioned, you know, stated that they're in favor of workforce housing. We like to cover kind of what is workforce housing in general, and, and our definition is, is housing that's affordable to the workforce in the area. We do intend to compete for housing tax credits from WIDA in December, and so what those are is, you know, if we were able to win those tax credits, we'd sell those to an investor, and that equity that comes in from that investor goes into our project to help, you know, help build the project. In return for those tax credits, WIDA requires us to restrict the incomes and rents of our tenants to levels that are approximately, you know, thirty percent of their incomes, but at varying levels. And in Dane County, as you can see, you know, there's, there's pretty high income levels for folks that would be considered low to moderate income. Family of two at fifty to eighty percent accounting mean income earns forty to fifty thousand dollars a year versus, you know, mid-sixties to low-eighties for a family of four. Majority of the units will be fifty to eighty percent accounting mean income, and we can kind of go over what those rents would look like on the next slide. And just a little bit about our timeline, again, Elise alluded to, you know, we met with the neighbors a couple nights ago. We plan to come back for, you know, general plan approval in November, so we can get to our application into WIDA in December. They will let us know if we've won in, in April, and if all goes to plan, we'd be building the project in October of next year, a year from now, with it coming online a year from then. Next slide. And this is just a, a proposed unit mix and rents. What I like to really highlight is, again, the fifty to eighty percent of accounting mean income. I mean, our, our one-bedroom in fifties and eight percent, eight percent units are nine hundred to a thousand dollars. You know, eleven hundred to almost fifteen hundred on the twos, and, and twelve hundred to seventeen fifty on the threes. The, the market study that we'll order for our tax credit application will vet out these rent levels, and our debt and, and equity providers will be, you know, wanting to make sure that we can get those higher-end rents. And I, and the reason why I kind of talk about the higher-end rents is, really, if we're going to be able to rent the project and get, you know, seventeen fifty a month or almost fifteen hundred dollars a month for the twos, we have to have a high-end product. We have to, you know, keep it well-maintained, and, and that's, you know, what you would see in the rest of our portfolio. And then, I think last is just a slide on, you know, feedback that we received from the neighbors. You know, obviously, there's always concern about traffic, and, uh-oh. And kind of, you know, would that construction traffic go through the neighborhood? Again, we talked a little bit about, you know, what could the building look like? Overall, I think there was a really good conversation, and there was general support. We heard this is a much better plan than something that we saw last year. You know, the tenant uses, we would like to see, again, you know, pizza, coffee, you know, something that we can walk to, go get ice cream, that sort of thing. Some of the, the residents suggested that maybe we either increase or move more of the retail to the front of the building that faces Oregon Parks Drive. The challenge is with the, the drive-through and, and the parking, is majority of the parking's on the back of the building, and so kind of maintaining, you know, where the, the, that space is located is tricky. Trying to think what else is on that slide. Can you think of any other feedback that we had? Yeah, they, they liked, they liked the idea of, of having some green space in between the, the retail and the street, angle parking. They liked the fact that there was townhomes on the, on the site to kind of break up the, the look and kind of make it more, you know, a transitional neighborhood, you really fit into that space. And, and I guess I'll let, see if, Elise, if you had any other comments, on feedback that we heard, but.
Yeah, and just from kind of the zoning perspective with the commercial space, I think the neighborhood was excited to see that this space would have some commercial element to it, and I think they were excited that you guys gave them kind of the opportunity to talk about what they thought would be successful and a good addition to the neighborhood. Yeah, I think that was the other comment, other than, I was trying to get my, uh...
Gets stymied.
Yeah, PowerPoint to re-connect.
That was on a roll.
The routers, the routers thought the meeting was too long.
Okay. I gotta read.
Let me go back.
Oh, it's gone. I'll, I'll wrap it up really fast, and, and these are kind of some things that we'd like to get your feedback on as well. Let's see.
Dead greenspace.
Yeah, just, yeah, you know, having some sort of fence, either it's a fence or it's some sort of landscaping buffer. Again, positive about the direction of, of the plans versus what was presented last year, and then how do we kind of keep the construction vehicles from, you know, going through the neighborhoods versus, you know, necessarily come into the site? So, that is our, our update, and we look forward to your feedback.
Thank you. Any other plant question?
I do. So, I want to say you guys are, were really smart on this one, to go to the neighborhood right from the beginning. I think that being a neighborhood guy many, many years, it makes a big difference how neighborhoods will sort of see a project and approach it. And it sounds like you got some great feedback from them, and so they feel, you know, invested, and you listen to them, so you guys did a really good job with that, so. I also, I liked a lot of your designs, I liked the way things looked, and we had seen some of that before, but you guys did a good job getting out in front, so.
Yeah, I think we still have more work to do.
Yeah.
And still trying to get the word out, but definitely a good start.
And you got good feedback.
Yep.
Yeah.
A lot of just, just letting them know how the, the WIDA plan works, and one of the questions they have is, would I keep the whole thing to be first floor, retail, and supply a little bit more, and so.
Yeah.
It was just that, that dialogue exchange.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
On the timeline you put up there, you were, you know, indicating approvals and such, and then your WIDA application, and, you know, the hopeful of, you know, winning of that. This project would be subject to WIDA tax credits? You wouldn't move forward if you didn't get that in April, or?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's one of those, it's one of those things where it's, it's kind of nice that we're close to December. I mean, it helps with getting sites under contract, but there still is that lead time. North Point in general has had a high amount of success in awards of tax credits. We received the Uno's project and the McFarland project in April of this year, and so there's a, a good amount of risk that North Point takes in turning in the applications, and so we really try to make sure that we have a good plan, that is financially feasible, that we believe scores well, to be competitive, so that we, you know, when we, we get, you know, folks on board for a plan, that we have a good chance. It's not one-hundred percent certain that they would fund the project, but, you know, definitely, we like, you know, our organization has a good track record of, of getting the tax credit resources.
I think the site, too, you mentioned, has a lot of, in the WIDA criteria haven't been published yet, but in terms of Oregon meets sort of that small-town, small-urban is at the category, and then also proximity to daycares, employment centers, park amenities, school, high-quality schools, things like that. So, I feel like you also, you have a pretty high level of confidence that, you know, Oregon projects in this area specifically, too, are really kind of what WIDA's looking for.
Yeah, you know, I used to run the program at WIDA, and a lot of the scoring categories are place-based, you know, access to quality schools. Oregon has one of the top school districts in the state, I believe it's the top quartile of, of, of school districts in the state. Areas of high immediate income, access and proximity to jobs, transportation amenities. You know, we, we would be applying in the, the small urban set aside for the tax credits, and, and we did win a tax credit award with our McFarland project last year, so we have a really good sense of kind of where those scores are going to shake out. Again, it's not a hundred percent guarantee, but, you know, it's, there's a, a lot of really good amenities, things that are going on in Oregon that really help with what WIDA would like to see for, you know, workforce and affordable housing.
Any other plant commission members have comments?
I think it's a good use for that, that space.
I know we've been working, you know, developers obviously tried for many, many years, I think probably fifteen, twenty years, to find a use for this site. I think, you know, they, they met with staff and showed us an earlier version of this site plan about two or three weeks ago now, and I think it's a really good transition between the commercial that's along CC there, and then the addition of the duplexes to the west, and then to the north that are existing, the park, and then kind of transitioning back to the single-family homes. So provides that commercial space, but also has the mix of residential types here on the parcel, and I think, yeah, it's a good, definitely a really good fit. Be excited to see this property be used.
I think it's exactly what we've been sort of waiting for. I mean, it was what we were sort of envisioning since this plat first came through. It's got a commercial aspect, it's got multifamily, it's workforce development layer, it's got a good mix of unit types. I would not change the location of the commercial. I think that it is in the right location. I would not try to bring it around to Oregon Center Drive. I think that you've got that angled parking on the street that's to the west. I think that's going to be, you know, the, the hotbed of, of activity for that, that commercial development. I think it's in the right location. If you were to put parking along Oregon Center Drive, I, I wouldn't put angled. I mean, then you've got a mix of angled parking and perpendicular parking. Either leave it like it is or make it perpendicular, but don't mix and match kind of thing.
Okay.
The, between the property line and the parking that, that's parallel in Oregon Parks, is that sort of like normal parkway in a residential district, or is that a part of a condominium sort of?
It's, it's kind of funny, you can see here on, a little bit on the property line, so I think this is, this is eight thirty-one here on the right-hand side. But this is sort of a upside-down Oklahoma-shaped parcel, and right away, Oregon Center Drive, it's a private road in this section, it's actually connected to this parcel in the back.
Okay.
And there's a, kind of a condo association between these two parcels and the Mulligan's and daycare parcel that maintain that private drive. We did have a discussion at the staff level about, is this the right time to talk about making that public right away? I think Jeff and then our village attorney, Matt, have different perspectives on that, and it's just more a matter of, is this the right time to do that or not? So maybe that's something that gets discussed a little bit further, maybe separate from the, the zoning, you know, conversation for this project, but.
Where I was going with that is, it may determine as to whether or not you can even do anything with that parking. And I also wanted to know what flexibilities there might be for landscaping in that area. I, I think that the dimension that you've got is about right as far as you're building to the property line. I think that there's enough room in there to do something pretty nice. You know, whether that be a couple of steps down, if it helps you to raise that platform up and then get some access easier into your underground parking, and then you can put porches on there, which would soften up some of that residential aspect of it. You know, I would go so far as to take those tower elements and put a hip roof on them so that they tie together with the, the smaller units down there. I would not put a hip or a gable roof on this building. I mean, that's another twenty-five feet of elevation that I don't think the neighbors are thinking about, especially when they're up there, like you had said, fifteen, seventeen feet from finished floor of this building. Instead of looking at the third floor of a building, all of a sudden, they're looking at the third floor in a, oh-my-god roof. So I would keep, I'd keep the flat roof and then just do the tower elements with a hip or a gable or, or something residential to soften it that way. It also then gives you a nice platform to put your solar panels on that roof at an angle that is best suited instead of being stuck with a roofline. You know, the commercial uses, they're small, it's like a, a big house, I'm assuming you'll use like a residential split, but, you know, if you get a, if you get a, commercial uses have commercial problems. Hoods, make-up air, HVAC, electric, ADA access, you know, all that sort of stuff. So the, the types of users is going to kind of determine some of the stuff, too, as to where those things have to happen in, in deliveries. As far as traffic, you know, apartments typically have a lower traffic use than a, than an office building, so that's never, I've never experienced that being a problem as far as that goes in, in adding additional trip, trips to a, a development. So I, I think that this is a good project for this location. I think you're going down the right road. I think that you've got a good layout. I look forward to seeing the details, and, and as somebody said, I think that you've done a nice job of engaging the neighbors on this at a good time.
Anybody else? Got enough?
Yep.
To go forward?
Yeah, and any, I guess, any other comments on the areas of parking or parking ratios with the building?
You've got, let's, rough numbers. You've got fifty units, you're going to have to have seventy-five for apartments?
Sixty and ninety.
Yeah, sixty units, which if we, if that change is adopted that we just talked about, one-point-five spaces per unit, that's ninety parking spaces, sixty times one-point-five for the residential.
So that's not a forty-nine unit building?
It, it's forty, forty-eight with forty-nine underground parking stalls and then twelve townhomes.
Okay. The townhomes kind of take care of themselves.
Okay.
You know, I mean, that's just, they do. And I'm just rough numbering it here, ballpark, fifty units for simple math. So you've got fifty units, you're going to need seventy-five parking spaces, you've got three thousand commercially, you're going to need, what, ten parking stalls? So you're going to need about eighty-five parking stalls-ish plus or minus.
Yeah, I think there's some opportunities in various, you know, whether it's the parking stalls along the drive or at the end here, I'm sure these are kind of intended for guest parking, but maybe it's along the park, too. I think there's definitely opportunities to reduce the parking, and maybe if we get a little further along in determining which commercial tenants might be in that space. We could even do a similar approach to what we suggested with Culver's, what kind of a dash-in, future expansion, and if those are needed down the road, as, as to be done as kind of an internal staff review, site planner vision.
Thank you so much.
That would be, that approach would be, open to you, John.
It's just fuzzy math, sorry.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Good, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Item six, unfinished business. We don't have any. I think we're good. Item seven, new business, none. And staff reports. Status of development projects is A, which we don't really have any, but it is what it is kind of, unless anybody's got a question for Elise?
Or not.
Or not? Item B was planning director and zoning administrator report. I got a question on this.
Mm-hmm.
What is it?
So this is something that actually Martin has started something similar, just kind of update on his activities. I think a lot of people don't really know what we do on a day-to-day basis, and so just highlighting some, you know, meetings and trainings and, you know, work that we kind of do, just to kind of explain spending, how we're spending our time. If you have any questions, you know, meetings I've attended or webinars or anything like that. But this is just something I'm already preparing for the board, it's not special for you guys, I'm sorry, so just copy-pasting, and the board's going to see it on Monday night, so.
I'm sorry, it just seemed, it just seemed odd to me.
Yeah, it's a new addition.
It's new.
I, I like that, thank you, Elise.
You're welcome.
And it's good to have you back.
It's good to be back. It's like baby fell asleep with dad, too, so all is well.
Item C are planning staff meeting agendas for September seventh and twenty-second. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or at least anything? Anybody? Nope? Item nine, items for future meetings, affordable housing strategies, tip, policy packet, driveway setbacks, and annexation process. Easy stuff. All right, so gear up for that, guys. Item ten, favorite item, adjournment. Anybody want to make a motion?
No more. Move.
All right.
And we have, anybody second, a mass seconds?
Second.
All right. All those with favorite signal, have I saying aye?
Aye.
All of them opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.